Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(laughing). (inaudible). 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 (inaudible).
That was the dog was saying the pledge with us. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the April 1st meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Kallo, Bev's here. Good, thank you, Bev. We're going to say our prayer.
Yes. Lord, we thank you that we are meeting today, the Commissioners, to conduct matters of business for Lorraine County. We ask you to guide their hearts and their minds in the spirit of fairness right through their speech and impart your supreme wisdom unto their activities that they do today so they can come to a successful conclusion. And thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Now, Commissioner Kallo has our dog from our kennel.
We've got an excited dog today. She's a six-year-old female, lab mix. She's available for adoption now. She was found as a stray on Randall Street on the East Side of Lorraine. I can't believe somebody lost this dog and hasn't come to claim her yet. We have 21 dogs in our kennel, so if she doesn't quite fit your needs, stop by and grab another one.
Obviously, she needs a fenced-in yard. She needs to run around a little bit.
Yeah.[142.56][142.56](laughing).[143.56][143.56](music)
Under Resolutions Number One, Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Commissioner. I do have a few potential hires, Commissioners, Job and Family Services, Children and Family First, that I wish to discuss with the Board. Also, if we have time, I'd like to talk about ongoing litigation and potential purchase and sale of real estate. All three of those topics are allowed under the Sunshine Act for the Executive Session. Discussions would ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting, we go into Executive Session, we talk about those three issues that I've detailed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Approve and waive the reading of the minutes of March 5th?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Approve the issuance of hospital facilities revenue bonds of the County of Allen, Ohio, authorizing supplement of a CERN sublease and CERN agreement of lease with Mercy Health and its affiliates in connection with the release of CERN property. Authorize other documents in connection with the issuance of bonds and such release, and the TEPRA hearing was held yesterday by the Port Authority.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. Cordez, any discussion at all on this? You're on the Port Authority.
Let me just pull it up. Commissioner, I was looking at the information given to us for...
Did the Port Authority approve it through the TEPRA hearing? No comments?
We do.
I mean, we don't do the bonds anymore. They've taken them to another county, so...
Pat Metzger's here, and representatives from Mercy are here, and so maybe they just want to say a little bit about why we do this here.
Either one.
Either one, Pat.
Good morning. Aaron Sutton from Dinsmore, and, let's see, Robert Torquinson, the CFO for Mercy are here, in case you had any other questions. But yesterday, the Port Authority conducted the public TEPRA hearing for the issuance of some new money and the refunding of some other dollars, which they can detail out for you if you had any questions, which, you know, was open to the public, and that proceeded successfully, so here we are today to ask that you review it and sign off on it.
Was any of the property released in Lorraine County from the first issuance?
I think they could best speak to that themselves, and I'd invite Aaron to come up, if that's okay with you guys.
Perfect, yes. Sure.
Morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Aaron Sutton with Dinsmore and Scholl, and we're acting as bond counsel on this transaction. To answer your question first, the property release that you authorize in the resolution is for property relating to Mercy West, which is in Mount Airy, which is in Hamilton County. So, no, we're not releasing any Lorraine County property at this time from the sublease. Do you want me to give you a little background on the bond issue?
Sure.
The resolution before you authorize is, gives your elected representative applicable approval. Under the IRS code, we have to have a public hearing in any of the jurisdictions where bond proceeds were spent or may be spent, and so, since some of the proceeds were spent or may be spent in Lorraine County, we held a public hearing yesterday. We published notice of it two weeks ago in the Chronicle Telegram. The important thing to note for your purposes is that these are not governmental bonds, these are not general obligation bonds, these are paid solely from the revenues of Mercy Health.
Commonly known to us as hospital conduit bonds.
Correct, under Chapter 140 of the Ohio Reimise Code, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Just nice for an explanation. Nobody understands all this stuff, so it's best while you're here.
Right.
A couple minutes of your time to explain.
Happy to explain any time when there's new members or whenever you have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, advertise request for public hearing to solicit comment on social service programming and funding, notice being in the Journal on April 6 and 13, and hearing will be held April 21 at 5:00 p.m. with Job and Family Services.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Under the engineer, approve an attorney contract with Mastermind LLC, Elmore, in the amount of $25,650 to provide an inventory of guard rail and county road system. This will be reimbursed by CAO at 90% to be paid from account MVGT, and then authorize the engineer to execute on behalf of the board with prosecutor's approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Advertise for 2015 wastewater system improvement, Tanglewood Sanitary Station Rehab Project, notice being in the Chronicle on April 3 and 10, and open at 2:00 p.m. on April 22.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Cordez, didn't we just redo Tanglewood about eight years ago, seven years ago? What's the update on the project?
Well, we have crews down there all the time. The, we have a lift station down there, grinder.
Right.
The grinder's undersized. We're constantly down there dealing with, you know, clogging up and having problems. So, we need to put a new grinder in there to service that area, because it's, you know, it's a forest all the way up to Grafton, so it's been an ongoing problem for a couple of years. We did do work down there several years ago, but we didn't replace the grinder. This is a bigger one, and it's definitely needed, because we just got a lot of labor and seems to be down there quite a bit.
Okay, thank you.
Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Accept and approve the dedication of roads in accordance with the Ohio Reimise Code 5553.31, part of the Arlington subdivision platte recorded May 15, 1959. Area on Middle Ridge Road is Lorraine County Road, area on Rosedale Avenue is Amherst Township Road, and area on Allen Dale Drive is Amherst Township Road.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Authorize Lorraine County Board of Commissioners to be the petitioner on behalf of being township trustees to implement the process for vacating an old road right away, or, yeah, for continuation of Eagle Nest Drive, starting from east road line of Deer Run Drive to eastlier boundary of Flint Ridge subdivision.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Receive and journalize a regular annexation petition of 0.7229 acres from New Rush Township to the city of Oberlin. Joshua E. Lamb, agent for petitioner James E. Horning. Hearing will be held Tuesday, June 2 at 9:30 a.m.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Receive and journalize a ditch petition for staying...
Services issues, developmental disabilities, the indigent attorney fees, we've got over 50 state reps on board in the House working on the budget. We're trying to garner an additional $12 million, and I've sort of been working on that for four or five years. It's gone from 23% to 40% reimbursement. We're hoping to get them in this year's budget, for the next annual budget, at least 50%, hopefully the state takes over all costs. That is what they're supposed to do by the Constitution, but as we all know, things in Columbus don't always go as they're supposed to go. I congratulate Judge Joe Striagliano and the Blessing House. They were award winners of Lorraine County Bar Association's Annual Gala. Judge Striagliano talked about his years, and it's just real good, isn't it? The two ladies from Blessing House, all they do with helping children out in our community, they've established in '05 or '06, and just what they've done is just amazing, you know, helping people out with children when there's problems at home. Also, in regards to our land bank, congratulations, everybody who participated in that. Really appreciate what we're able to accomplish. Kind of missed Doc yesterday with the press, how the Commissioners really got to put their point of view in. But, again, we did a great job, a collective effort, to really clean up our neighborhoods, and not only just stabilize them, give them a chance to revitalize them, as we tear down these next 130-plus homes, even though we all know there's more to do. But I really want to get some comments in regards to the Thriving Communities Initiative, and Mr. O'Kockes, who runs that, and all the disparaging comments he made about Lorraine County Land Bank not able to make and do what we were supposed to do as a county land bank. We blew right through the numbers, similar to what we do with the Attorney General's money a couple of years ago. And actually, on the Attorney General's Moving Ohio Forward Report, it's got a picture of, one of the four pictures on that is of Lorraine County Land Bank doing a demolition, so...
Our 150th.
Yeah, was it the 150th?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, yeah, our team really did a great job, despite some negativity out there, outside of our community. And I just want to make sure I point that out, that we did a great job putting it all together, the leadership of Mr. Metzger, Mr. Cordez, our past Clerk of Courts, our current Clerk of Courts, the foreclosure court, and the general common pleas, our Treasurers Office, the Auditors Office, and everybody else who participated. Great day for Lorraine.
Got to tip it to the Prosecutor's Office.
And the Prosecutor's Office. Yeah, I can't... Chris, you did a great job under the, you know, tutelage of Jerry and us, of course, but...
Yeah, it's amazing what we can do and accomplish when we all work hard together.
Yep. Great thing.
You know, we only need one reason to work together, that's because you want to. There's a thousand other reasons that you don't, so it's a good undertaking.
The other thing, too, on that, the first go-around, there were supposed to be no extensions, so we met our goal, and we were hoping to get additional dollars then, and it didn't happen. They ended up giving an extension. Now, this time, they're saying no extension, so hopefully that'll stick, and the communities that didn't get, reach their goals, hopefully we can get that money, additional dollars that we need here in Lorraine County, so...
End of my report.
Commissioner, just to comment on that, I told Chris and Heather and their Secretary Judy, who did all the work on it, that I would be sure to come over and take the credit for it.
Thank you, Jerry. Without you, they'd be nothing.[831.57][831.57](laughing).
Mr. Lundey?
Thank you, Madam President. First off, I had the opportunity to attend an Oberlin meeting that was hosted by the Legal Women Voters, the Mayor's Pipeline Safety Council, on Friday. Found that to be very informative, and as a result of that meeting, looking into a couple of other things, but it was, I thought, very well done. Also, you know, the land bank for Pat, and Chris, and Jim, and Jerry, and, you know, the whole group, excellent work on the land bank. When I was a member of the Legislature, it used to be where the land bank was kind of reserved for just the big cities in the state. And a gentleman who, by the name of Peter Uvagi, good luck trying to spell the last name, I've always struggled with that, even though I've known him all these years, but he really pushed hard as a representative out of Toledo, saying, hey, this just isn't fair, other counties need to be able to do this and participate. And because of his hard work and bipartisan push, we were able to bring the land bank to all the counties. And Lorraine County has been a leader in this area. I mean, that first round, we completed that first round, recognized by the Attorney General's Office for doing that, and then this latest round, you know, as my colleagues had said, it's, the thing about public service is, you know, you're out there trying to do what's good for the community, and there's never-ending trail of naysayers, and I would say the best way to put the naysayers to rest is to perform, 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 and we outperformed with the 89 properties, far surpassing a goal of 60. So, great work for everybody there with that. Truly a team effort. It's turning around neighborhoods, it's turning around communities, it's going to help our property values overall, which is going to help our schools, help our communities, so this is movement in the right direction after coming through such a tough recession period. Also, the Community Transit Group that's been meeting, met again yesterday, and it looks like coming up in May, there'll be two visioning sessions, because the input is very critical from the community, as to what the community wants the transit system to look like in the county, and the thinking is that there will be a visioning session probably in Oberlin, at the college there, and then plans are underway to Plan 1 for Lorraine County Community College, have a visioning session there. So, excited about the progress that's being made in that area. That concludes my report.
Next Wednesday, 2 o'clock, we'll have a Records Commission meeting, Board Correspondents.
I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Miskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Mr. Kallo?
Aye.
Public comment.
Public comment. This is you.
Welcome once again.
Right. Just remember, I'm sure you remembered, just to state your name and address for the record before you begin.
Okay, my name is Richard Baumgartner. My address is 24731 Framingham Drive, West Lake, Ohio. I am a property owner in Grafton Township. And I quote Mr. Cordez, "The only reason to work with us is because we want to." And that's my mission today, is to try to, want you to work with us. Why I'm here is, I need to probably go over a little history real quickly. Six months ago, I got a letter from Nexus saying that they wanted some of my land to use it forever, and I should be ready for that. So, soon learned that this is a question of property owners versus big business, in my mind. And the big business people have a lot of leverage and power that I don't have. So who stands up for me? Well, government does, and we, the people, and you guys, and right now, the government mediation between big business owners and landowners is being done by the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC. So, FERC has a process where comments can be made about the route of this gas pipeline that Nexus is proposing, this 42-inch, 2 billion cubic feet a day pipeline, which has been reduced to 36 inches, by the way. But, so, FERC has this process to resolve issues, to list issues, and so forth. And today, we'd like to talk to you about the route of the gas pipeline, how we want to change it, and how those comments are going through the FERC process. So, basically, Paul Gregowski is a leader of an organization called CORN, which is a homeowners organization, and he will discuss this map a little bit later. We have a map of some things we want to talk about. CORN has proposed routes...
Hold on one second, Mr. Baumgartner, we need to give you a microphone, otherwise it won't pick up.
Oh, okay. Well, let me get over here. I've got a little bit more on my thing for a while.
Give it to him after he's finished.
Okay, basically, the Nexus pipeline goes from southeastern Ohio up to Canada, and it goes through Ohio and Lorraine County, as they propose it. So, we have a lot of counties in Ohio, we're all team members here, so we have a lot of hard luck stories about different counties. I know this is the Lorraine County thing, but this is also a Buckeye thing, so we've got other inputs from other counties and so forth. And I know you guys are all very busy, so I think maybe the best thing to do at this point is to go through the proposed Nexus line, and how we want to move it, who's wanted to move it. We've got over 20 municipalities that have looked at this route and said, we don't like this route, the way it goes through our territory. And one of those municipalities is Grafton Township, and they've posted a resolution on the FERC website that says, we're against this, the routing of this line. So, we're at a critical point in this process right now, and we need some input that says Lorraine County wants this pipeline moved, because it's going to impact our infrastructure, our emergency response, our safety issues. We want it moved to a better area. And these comments are going through FERC. I've posted some things there that list some of the pertinent FERC comments at this point, recently. Recently, one of the cities that has been against this pipeline is the city of Green. And Green was so against this pipeline that they've taken their resources, their GIS system, and developed a route along with the CORN people and other inputs, and they've posted an alternate route. And it's highly technical, and it's of the same quality as Nexus's route, with a lot of detail and so forth. And Paul is going to get up, I think, and talk about these routes, if you would.
I can.
Paul's the executive of CORN, which is the organization for across Ohio to represent homeowners. And Paul, if you want to talk about the Nexus route, and what you guys have been working with, with Green, and what we need to do is...
Okay, so my name is Paul Juraski. I live in York Township in Medina County. And like Richard, back in August of last year, my wife and I received a letter from the Spectra Energy, the lead developer of the Nexus pipeline, said they wanted to run this 42-inch pipeline at, operating at 1,440 PSI through our property. And, you know, that just spurred us to action. So, in Medina County, the Coalition to Reroute Nexus is a grassroots organization, started in Medina County, germinated over a concern for public safety, property values, and fundamental property rights. And what we've learned over time is that the process for citing or routing these pipelines is really, I'll just use the word dysfunctional, because what happens is the company defines the project, the company defines the route, which is just basically the shortest distance between the points they're coming from and going to. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission approves the project, they rarely, if ever, it's not their business to deny projects. They approve the route, and because Congress in 1938 passed something called the Natural Gas Act, they gave to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission the power to confer on a private company the use of eminent domain. So the company defines the project, company picks the route. FERC approves the project, FERC approves the route, and along with it comes the power to take anyone's property here, including yours, to achieve their means. And then the piece that's just maddening is, there's a section of the Code of Federal Regulations that defines the safety standards for routing, citing, and building these pipelines. Well, turns out that there's fundamentally no safety setback standards. They can literally build this one foot from your house. Like that picture shows. That's Liz's house from Fulton County, okay? This is an extreme example. However, when you look at the route that Nexus has chosen, which is the red line there, okay? It goes through many populated townships and counties. It goes through Summit County, the third most densely populated county in Ohio. You talked, Richard talked about the city of Green that has partnered with us to produce a new, less invasive route. You've got Stark County, the eighth, you've got Medina, the 12th most densely populated county, and Lorraine, 17th, out of 88 counties in Ohio. Why did they choose this route? I think that's a rhetorical question.
Shortest, easiest.
Exactly, and because they can.
We're not the 17th largest.
No.
We're dense. You're talking about dense, you're...
Dense.
Populative landmass?
Densely populated. Density of population, yes. Not most populated, but most densely populated. So, as we learn more about this process from, you know, other people who have gone this path before us, there are many, many groups like ours, and homeowners like ours across the country, that are suffering from this same process. And we learned that the most effective thing we can do to protect ourselves and our communities was to propose a reroute. This came directly from the project manager at the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, Joanne Wachholder, who we've met with on multiple occasions, and we communicate with almost daily. And she begged us that the only way that she could possibly help us was for us to produce a reroute, which is what we've done with the assistance of the city of Green on the eastern end of the line, okay? So the reroute that we're talking about there, I think it's, you want to point it there? It's the blue line, okay? And the goal of our reroute proposal was to minimize the impacts on the variables that the companies and the Federal Energy Commission evaluate these routes on. And if you take a look at the existing Spectra Energy Nexus route, there are 4,600 properties, mostly residences, that are within 1,500 feet of this pipeline. And we use 1,500 feet because this is a big pipeline, and the blast zone, the zone of total destruction in the event of an accident, would wipe out everything within 1,500 feet. So we use that as a reasonable safety setback standard, because the federal government doesn't have one. And our route reduces the number of residences and structures within that zone, 1,500-foot zone, by 75%. And how do we do that? We just take it through a more rural area, okay? And when it comes to wetlands, another important element of the analysis, we reduce the number of wetland acres by over 50%. So, it's a sensible route. It uses common, you know, it's logical, it uses common sense, it still allows the company to meet its business plan, okay? But it, it's more sensitive to the residents and, you know, population in these areas. So, on Monday of last week, the city of Green filed this with the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, and on Tuesday, Joanne Wachholder filed a nine-page letter to the company, saying, among other things, you will evaluate this route, okay? And their evaluation will take some time, and we won't have an answer until probably the middle of June, when their next resource report. But, as part of that process, and the reason we're here, asking for you to support this sensible and logical reroute, is that the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission tells us that we need to get input from our elected officials. Get them engaged, get them involved, get them to support your cause. We have to do the heavy lifting, but with your support, you know, this can become a reality. So, across the state, we set out to get support from local elected officials. We now have 24 resolutions from individual elected bodies, like yourself, including Summit County, Medina County, Wood County, and hopefully, in the near future, Lucas Fulton County area. Yours would be a very nice addition to this long line of people that are supporting this process of rerouting to more sensible location.[1763.65] process of rerouting to more sensible location. Do you have any questions?
The pink line coming east and west there?
Yes, whereas the ET Rover line is a similar gas pipeline.
So, what's maddening, well, Ohio is in a unique position, I believe, at this point in time. And that is that because of the development of energy in southeastern Ohio, West Virginia, Pennsylvania, Utica Shale, Marcellus Shale, that the number of, there are a number of pipelines that are in the proposal process right now. Which is ET Rover, which is Energy Transfer Partners, is a side-by-side 42-inch pipeline, so two pipelines, operating at 1,440 PSI. Nexus is a single 42-inch pipeline. You've got ANR, which is another 42-inch pipeline. And there's, I love this one. There's one that's in the development stage, it's called Utopia. Anyway, you have these things all using the same process through FERC, which is the company picks the route, it's the shortest, and they just wander willy-nilly. There's a great letter that I'm going to leave with you, and I have copies of all kinds of letters and resolutions and things. But it comes from the Wood County Commissioners, who just recently filed, passed a resolution and filed with FERC that says something, and I'll paraphrase it. You know, we talked to a lot of people, and we're really not sure, because every day there's a new pipeline proposal in our county, whether there are two, three, four, five, or six pipelines company coming to our neighborhood, which in itself states the problem. And again, they're very supportive of our mission to reroute this. Now, I talked about the eastern end of the line, okay, which is a function, the issue is densely populated areas and neighborhoods and no safety setback. I'm going to introduce, who wants to go next, Rick?
Okay. Liz Victor from Fulton County is going to speak a little bit about what we're trying to accomplish out there. Again, we're a coalition across the state of individuals acting individually towards a common mission and goal. In Fulton County and that area, the issue is the Oak Openings region, which is environmentally unique, okay, area of the state of Ohio.
I was going to ask before you left the podium.
Yes, sir.
Do you have a street-level breakdown as to where this new path is? I mean, obviously, our greatest concern is how this pipe moves through Lorraine County. I understand what your goal and intentions are to get away from houses and people and things of that nature, but now with this different path that's going through the county, I don't know if you have a greater street-level breakdown as to where we're actually rerouting. You know, because this is a classic example of, you know, we always hear about, "Not in my backyard."
You bet.
So, the reality always is, is that while it may not be in your backyard, it'll be in somebody else's backyard. We have to be sensitive to that. So, I would just be interested in a greater breakdown. So, while we may be avoiding whatever Grafton Township, if we're moving more to the west, then obviously, we're picking up some other folks who maybe weren't impacted before.
Well, my technical abilities are not quite as advanced as Richard's, but I have a map here that I'm happy to lay out, and it literally is a cut-and-paste of the topographical route across Lorraine County, the existing route versus our proposed route, and I can show that to you.
And in the Green City posting, the first tenets, I'm not sure if you're familiar with how to get to those, but there is more detail.
You have to use the microphone when you're not at the podium, sorry.
In the Green posting and the FERC comments, there's more detailed sections of each one of the little.
And Richard, that's exactly what I have. I've taken the Green filing, it's on eight and a half by 11 sheets of paper on topographical map background, and I've cut and pasted them together on my map, and I'm happy to roll it out here, and maybe afterward, after we conclude, you can take a closer look at it. But you make an interesting comment, because as this process evolves, it's exactly what we as a group have come to understand. If we take it from my yard and put it on my neighbor's yard, what is that accomplished? And on January 9th, a group of us went down to the governor's office and met with Michael Fraser, his policy advisor on the energy, and we communicate, I communicate with him every Friday. And what we proposed to the state is that because of this unique position Ohio was in at this time, with this proliferation of these brand-new, high, large diameter, high-pressure pipelines, we ought to create a thoroughly engineered and carefully located pipeline safety corridor to house all of these pipelines. Because they're running from, again, southeastern Ohio, headed for Canada or headed for Defiance and places west, why don't we, why don't we do this a smart way and pre-designate an area where these people could run? It would, it would protect the pipeline, it would protect our, you know, the public safety, it would demonstrate respect for property rights. I mean, we could use federal highways, we could use US Route 30. There are lots of ideas that people have. You know, this is a forward-thinking concept because of the unique position that Ohio is in. And what's interesting is when you kind of research this subject, you find out it's not so unique. Canada already has these things. British Columbia adopted them. The president and CEO of Spectra Energy, Greg Ebel, has endorsed the idea of putting multiple pipelines in a single corridor for this. But yet, when we present these things to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission through the filing process under this docket number, the company fights back. They say, "Well, they don't exist, and it's just a theory. Keep processing our application, the way you're supposed to, FERC." It's just an interesting process to, it's.
So, you did say earlier that the response you got from FERC was that FERC has directed the company to evaluate this reroute?
Absolutely. And I'm going to leave you a copy of the March 24th letter that Joanne Wachholder filed. So, excuse me, I've taken a lot of your time.
Well, that's, I wanted to say, you've brought up a lot of good points, but the one that really is sticking with me is the fact that you said you're eliminating 75% of the people that would be 1,500 foot near the pipeline, right?
That's correct.
Seventy-five percent, so.
Reduction, yes.
Reduction in people close to it, so that makes a big difference.
And we will leave you those statistics, and that's true county by county.
And you can see with this pipeline going through Summit County and Stark County and all these populated areas, and moving it out to the farmlands, so to speak, I mean, there are going to be people up here that may be upset a little bit, but the number of people and small lots and critical situations gets reduced significantly.
Thank you.
Can I also say that in this route, Green was nice, kind enough to develop it through Lorraine County, but they weren't quite sure what we wanted to do with it. So, the rest of our job.
I had turned it on.
I don't know, maybe.
Yeah, it's on.
Richard, stand here.
It's on.
I'm not very good at this, as you can see. But anyway, a lot of these pipelines are being funneled through Toledo now to get up to Canada. And as much of a problem as we have, the people on the other end of the line, which Liz is going to speak about, have an even greater problem, because all those pipelines are coming through a smaller area, through populated areas. So, because of the process, we had to develop this as quickly as we could to try to convince somebody that this route should be moved. And it turned out the east side was the first one to get this job done. But what we're also trying to do is get the same kind of thing developed for the west end of the state. So, we need GIS data from various counties, we need people to look at this closely to say, "It goes here, 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 here." So, and they're under process now, but this part through Lorraine County is still a little bit up for grabs because we've got to meet up with the west side if we do this the way we'd like to do it. So, we've got a proposal right now that goes through Lorraine County, which you can't see because it's kind of scrolled up. But that's not really our end solution. Our end solution is to connect with the west side people and get the whole thing moved to a better location. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I think Liz is going to talk now about some other areas.
It's on. That is working, yeah.
Hi, my name is Dr. Liz Athade Victor, and thank you for having us here. And I did come from Fulton County today to your fair city, so thank you for welcoming us. And yes, I live in Swanton, Ohio, which is right in the Oak Openings region, and that region is very environmentally sensitive. It is on the paw with the Everglades. It's one of the last great natural places that we have, and Nature Conservancy has told us that, and it's one of Ohio's treasures. And I have to believe as public servants that you love your state of Ohio. As you can tell, I'm not from Ohio originally, but it's my adopted state. And, but, so I'm surprised that all of these things are happening. It was like a shock to me when I got this letter. And I want to show you the map of the pipelines that they gave us, and we're bragging about it, saying, "This is what it is. This is the map." And can you see Louisiana and Mississippi? Because I can't, okay? And I'm thinking, "We're going to have to change, instead of the Buckeye State, we're going to have to be the pipeline state, okay? Because this is a mess." And as Paul was saying, the whole route safety corridor thing is a really sensible idea. Because when that same company goes to British Columbia, when they go to the European Union, when they go to all these other places, when they go on our own federal lands, they have to be on a safety corridor. But they don't have to do it in Ohio. You know why? Because they don't have to do it in Ohio, because we have no laws to protect us in Ohio. So, it's up to us, the people and the people that you represent, to stand up and say, you know, "We can't do this." Rick and I spoke to the Wood County Commissioners yesterday, and we, I did a presentation for them, and they passed a countywide resolution. And of course, we're going to our county commissioners, and, you know, that's what county commissioners are for, I believe, to pass resolutions, to express the will of the people, to represent the people in dangerous situations. And this is a dangerous situation. I have a map of, or a poster here that I'll leave with you, of San Bruno explosion in California. And I called, I saw the video, and I flipped out, and so I called the mayor of San Bruno on Thanksgiving, and he called me back, which is shocking. And I, and this, what happened there was right near the San Francisco airport, okay? And they had to evacuate four miles of area, and that was only a 30-inch pipeline with, what is it, 386 PSI. We're talking about a 42-inch pipeline. I'm only 60 inches, so it's.
I thought you said it was, they reduced it to 34.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six.
Recently.
Thirty-six, just recently. And, yeah. So, and that's a lot, it's still a lot of pressure.
Which I'm surprised, though. I mean, we thought for sure it was going to be 42, right?
Yeah, we don't know the reason for that.
Yeah.
Right. So, anyway, when I called him and I said, "What do you think of this?", he said, "That happened in 2010. It's 2015, and we're still not recuperated from it." And I told him about the Nexus pipeline, the plans for Nexus pipeline, you know what he said to me? "You've got to get that out of your area. You have to get that out of the area." And you saw my house, it's right on top of my house, and I have neighbors all over the place. So, that is going to devastate our area. And in San Bruno, they had those planes that dropped the powdery stuff that put out the fire. They had totally great support, 65 fire trucks and everything like that. I have Joe from Bowling, he's going to be bowling in Toledo, and I call him from my volunteer fire department and say, "Hey, Joe, my place is on fire, can you come out?" That's who I have. That's who we all have out here. So, it's a really potentially dangerous situation, and we have to, we have to be proactive, not reactive in a situation like that. So, that's, it's very important for us to make sure that we know that. I also wanted to show you the CORN, this is, you can look at this, too, this is all the way we stretch as well. The Pipeline Thimza, which looks at the pipeline safety, they're completely understaffed. There was a congressional investigation, a New York Times investigation, and they found that they're completely understaffed. They, one energy company laid a pipeline a few years ago, and it ruptured, a few years ago. And then we went to, I received some information, because I'm connected now with all these pipeline groups, from the state of Maine, where the company was running around saying, "We're going to give you millions of dollars, it's going to be great, it's going to be", I always say, "lollipops and rainbows falling from the sky. It's going to be fantastic, you're going to get X number of millions of dollars." And then they laid the pipeline in Maine, and they said, "Well, the demand is not there." And they got like $2,000. That's what they ended up with, $2,000, after all was said and done. They said, "Well, you know, the demand isn't there, so that's our adjusted figure." I don't want that to happen to us. I can't see this happening to Ohio." So, that's all I have to say. If you have any questions?
Thank you.
Glad to help you. This is Rick, my favorite trustee.
She didn't vote for me.
I didn't. No, I did, I did.
Are you going to go over there? I'm going to stand here for a minute, and I'm going, I actually, I speak loud enough, I don't think I need a microphone.
You have to be by the microphone, sorry.
Yes. Oh, okay. My name is Rick Kazmerzak. I live in Swan Creek Township in Fulton County, Ohio. I am an elected official, I'm a trustee there in Swan Creek Township, have been for the last, I'm a newbie, a year in, what is this, April now, so a year and three months. Our township got involved, and basically, we're like every other township in the state of Ohio that is a part of most of these pipelines. We were not communicated with at all by Spectra Energy. I happened to go to church one day, well, not that I go to church every day, but the one Sunday, and my neighbor's there, and she grabbed ahold of me after the service and said, "You're my trustee, what are you doing for me?" And I said, "What would you like to tell me, you know, what do you want me to tell you what I'm doing for you?" And she said, "Well, what are you doing about this pipeline?" And as bad as Liz's property looks, this one is even closer. The pipeline will run within five feet of the foundation of their house, five feet. And I said, "I don't know what you're talking about." She said, "Well, there's a public meeting. Nexus is having an open house tomorrow evening, I believe it was, that evening or the next day, to talk about it." So, we went there, all three of our trustees went there as elected officials, asked some questions, didn't find out a whole lot, so we started doing some research on our own. We had Liz's group come and talk to us, and we're now about this deep, this deep in it. I can, you asked a question earlier, Lori, about a street-level map, and I can show you what we've got from our GIS department. If I can approach and make it easier for you to see, this is, this is the eastern part of Fulton County, and the green that you see are wetlands, I'm sorry, let's do this this way. The blue corridor to the right there are the parcels that are affected by Nexus, the 42-inch line. That is the red line that you see here. This is, this is my township here. This is the Oak Openings area, actually, the Oak Openings area actually goes, encompasses this whole area. And then this is another township, Fulton Township, Amboy Township. This is the Village of Swanton, Village of Matamora. We just started dealing with Nexus, and then a month later, we start getting calls at the township level from residents in this area. "What do you know about a pipeline going in that area?" "We don't know anything about a pipeline going in that area." So, now we have Nexus here, 42-inch high-pressure gas line. Kinder Morgan is a, it's called Utopia East and West, known by its popular name, dual 12-inch lines carrying hazardous liquids. We also, on the other side of our county, on the other side of our county that is not on this map, ET Rover is going from Defiance, Ohio, north into Michigan with a single 42-inch line. So, now, just in our county alone, as far as we know, we have three pipelines coming. How do you, as an elected official, and this is my area, how do we plan for growth? How do we plan for any type of services in here? I mean, if I was a developer, and I'm thinking, "Well, let's see, we've got a high-pressure gas line here, hazardous liquids here, you know, what's coming here?" The worst part about our area, Swan Creek Township has a population of about 8,600, mostly rural. We do have some municipal water in this area here, but basically, the rest of the township is septic tanks, wells, and sand points. If we have a leak from a hazardous liquids pipeline, how do we, as a township, provide water for these people? I mean, and once your well is poisoned, it's poisoned forever. So, the difficulty that we have is, as elected officials, how do we plan for the what-if? Now, the companies will tell you, and Nexus has, in writing, told us, "There will not be any incidents." Because we've asked that question, "What happens if?", and the answer was, "Well, there just won't be any incidents." And it's like, "Well, okay, that's good, but, you know, our, we know better than that." Kinder Morgan, we have not had any discussions with them yet, it's fairly new. We're working on a Nexus reroute. So, what we're looking at doing at the street level, is you can see how many homes, wetlands it's affecting here. There is a elevated rail line running in this area here that runs north and then cuts across this way, that we are looking at proposing a reroute there. But in order for us to propose our reroute, we have to then deal with Henry County, Wood County, and then all the way back to Connectit, because we can't just submit this to FERC and say, "This is what we want to do for Fulton County." So, which is why Richard and Paul are asking for your help. Your GIS is capable of doing. all of this. It's amazing what, what they can do with the systems they have. They can tell you number of residents, what the property values are in the corridor. It's just amazing. One of the things that I lose sleep over as an elected official, as you had mentioned earlier, no matter where you live, it's going to affect somebody. But the goal is, in this particular case here, we're affecting 652 property owners. Our reroute is looking at less than 200. So while I'm making 652 people very happy, there's gonna be 200 that aren't gonna be so happy. But, but I guess, the only thing that, that keeps me going is knowing that at least I'm reducing the impact on, on people. And if we can do a corridor, our goal is to move Kinder Morgan as well. However, I talked to a gentleman at the Ohio Power Siding Board yesterday, and I understand that the Ohio Senate exempted hazardous liquid pipelines in 2012 from any state or federal regulation. So it's all up to local municipal zoning ordinances. In, in our county, I am not aware of any local zoning ordinances that prohibit hazardous liquids pipelines. So this is a new one we have to start working on to see. Do you have any questions at all? I don't want to take any more of your time. I know, I know you're busy. But I know your GIS is, can do this. Ours is working very closely with us to do this. And actually, if you just took a street-level map of your county, the way it's explained to me from our GIS coordinator, you can just take a magic marker and draw on there where you would like a line, where you would like the reroute. They can scan it in, it becomes a route that looks just like this, and then they can give you all the data that you want. So if it's something that's, that's a work in progress, and you want to choose a couple different things, you can do that, scan it in, and they can give you all of the data that you're looking for. Thank you, thank you for your time.
We did attend a meeting that they had, Spectra, and, and we did talk to FERC, and you're right, there are no setback requirements, so they, they can put it right up against your foundation practically. No joke. Is there anybody else wishing to talk about this today? Okay. Well, we will definitely take it under consideration. Oh, did you wanna, did you wanna come?
I can say something real quick.
My name is Jim Wild. I live at 37523, State Route 303. Again, I was not due to speak today, but I was listening to you talk about the safety of your citizens with the abandoned homes that you want to take down to protect your citizens. Personally, I think that's a wonderful thing to do, because abandoned homes create a lot of issues for the community. But I also believe that a pipeline will create a lot more concerning problems for the community than a couple vacant houses. So I would like to ask you, as our elected officials, to please keep in mind of the danger, the potential devaluation of property, and that seriously sign on with the corn reroute plan. I think it'll benefit our county. I think it'll protect our property rights as citizens of this county, and I believe it'll also stabilize our property values. As our elected officials, your number-one goal is for public safety. And as a citizen and a business owner in Lorain County, my goal for my business is safety for my employees and safety for the people around my business. As a resident of Lorain County, I implore you to sign on with this and to grant the safety to your citizens that the citizens require and is needed. I thank you for your time. God bless you.
Thank you. We, we also have Tom Kelly, he's our emergency management director here today. Do you want to come up and, I mean, are, are we prepared for something like this? Or what are we gonna do in case this does come through our community, whether it's rerouted or not rerouted? What are our liabilities here?
Well, I, good morning.
Good morning.
I did put something together for you, which is on your desk this morning.
Yeah, I just got it, though. I didn't get a chance to look at it yet.
Well, let me, let me help Tom out here.
Please be on the other end.
I only asked him for it at 3:30 yesterday.
Oh, okay.
And when I got home at like 10:30.
So I, you know, I, we had conversation through the night, and I think we did conclude it around 10 o'clock, to be able to put a package.
All right, we'll let you off the hook this time.
A little bit of information together. So I have to rescue him, but I wasn't aware of some things that were gonna be brought up today, and I wanted you to have some information. And Commissioner Lundee had spoken to me on this extensively yesterday afternoon, too.
Yeah, after attending the Mayor's Safety Council meeting on Friday, had several conversations, and, you know, I know this is something that Tom and the emergency management leadership team take seriously, and, and I think, you know, the reality is that we already have a number of pipes, you know, going through our, through our county, and we had an issue in Wellington, was that about a year ago?
It's been three years now.
Three years now, wow.
A hundred and 15,000 gallons of.
Right. So, I mean, safety is something we don't, we don't take lightly, and, you know, as I said, the, the big challenge here is that, okay, we move it from, away from your home, and then we move it closer to somebody else's home. It, the problem still doesn't go away as far as the safety concerned. But, but I appreciate Tom looking into some additional things that were brought up at that Safety Council meeting, and, and I appreciate him doing a late-night preparation for this.
It was better being a weeknight than a weekend, that's fine. Just to let you know, the pipeline companies do give us training every year. They provide us with a book here, and you've got some copied pages out of this, that, it's about a four-hour training. They go extensively through how they check the pipes and things like that. We did have that incident in Wellington, and about three years ago, it was in February, three years ago, where one of the lines, it was a high-pressure, it was only eight inches around, but a high-pressure fuel line, it was premium gasoline at the time, suffered some corrosion from an outside source, it wasn't the pipes problem, that it released 115,000 gallons of gasoline. It was a lot. And there were ditches along the roadways that had four-foot of gasoline in it. But luckily, it was winter, it was snowing, the wind was blowing correctly, and nothing ignited it. But I believe they're still cleaning up some residual spots that tends to seep out of the ground. But our biggest prevalent transportation of fuels through the pipelines right now is natural gas in the county. We have two big lines, ones, or they're both owned by Columbia Gas Transmission. One runs roughly, roughly the southern end of Oberlin. If you drew a line with Hamilton Street across the county, it runs through there. The other one, oddly enough, runs down a residential street, east and west across the county, about 200 feet south of North Ridge 254. I can give you an idea, if you've seen the pipeline, I'm sure you have, the old car wash at Oberlin Avenue and Cooper Foster. There's an Italian restaurant on the corner there. If you look right next door, there's a bunch of pipelines that come under, and that's part of that system, one of the gate shut-off valves. Any questions?
So how'd you make out looking at the, the potential for grant money?
There's a grant through, let me open this up here, I should have done it. Through the Pipeline and Hazardous Materials Safety Administration, that's part of the U.S. Department of Transportation. And they give a grant every year, it's a $1.5 million grant that allows you to apply for. And let me put through, give you a couple examples of what they've done it for, done for here. Of course, it's flipped backwards. Improvement of local pipeline emergency response capabilities, improvement of safe digging programs, development of pipeline safety information resources, implementation of local land use practices, and enhanced pipeline safety, community and public awareness campaigns, enhancements in public participation and official proceedings pertaining to pipelines. Now, there's, that $1.5 million, there were 31 entities last year that applied for that, about $1.3 million, and no one has given more than about $50,000. Those that I read to you were some of the processes that they applied for to get the grant money. Commissioner Lundee mentioned yesterday Chester County, Chester County in Pennsylvania, they've used it to put a repository online for people to use to access it, to take a look at where the pipeline goes, safety, that type of information.
You know, I, I think that while the route is still moving, hopefully.
Flux.
It's not really finalized. We do know a couple things. One, a pipeline's coming. Where it may actually finally be, that's, it's still up for, I think, discussion, but I think we need to make application for some of these grants, start that process, so that we're out in front of it. We don't necessarily need to know where the, the pipeline is going to be completely located, just the knowledge that it's coming should be enough to make us eligible for grant money.
That's a short window, though.
It's currently open right now and a deadline's April 22nd.
He has more time than I gave him to put the information together, so, you know, I'm sure we'll be able to, we'll be able to get, we'll be able to get this done. So I'll be, I'll be coming back to you with some, some ideas of what we may be able to apply for, if that works for the board.
Yeah, yeah, I really appreciate your looking into this with such little lead time, but...
One of my problems was that I wanted to call like Chester, and it's supposed to be, they were already gone for the day.
Right.
So I wasn't able to make contact with them.
But I think it is important, you pointed out in the packet here you gave us on the local capabilities with the hazardous material emergency response, the 44 technicians, Type 3 certification, the three regional response trailers for spill containment, you know, so we do have things in place. It's not like this is new, new ground or new territory for us.
Right.
What I heard at that Mayor's Safety Council presentation was that it seems like a lot of these incidents happen when the pipeline company actually sends in their contractors, and their contractors go to do work on the pipe and trigger an explosion or a problem. And that's where the concern is. So the hope would be that, that we can map extremely well and very specific as to where this pipe is, so there's not a question as to where it's at, so we can avoid those type of incidents. And even though we have a, a technical rescue response team plan in place, that, you know, maybe we can beef that up a little. I know there was an example used of when crews go on site, sometimes they have to go through these big binders of steps that they go through.
We have those binders.
Yeah, and they were pointing out that in some places, it's almost been reduced to, almost like flashcards. I mean, a much simpler process that you can go through, so you can activate things more quickly. The, the other thing, I think, that you and I had a brief conversation about the other day is these valves, is there, if there's some way, you know, some things can be put in place to make sure that we have the shutdowns. I think you said that incident in Wellington was, what, eight miles away?
They're eight miles apart, and it took the, there was so much pounds per square inch in there, that once they shut them off, it still took four hours for that pressure to equalize, that gasoline was still coming out of them.
So those are concerns, I think, that hopefully could be addressed if, if we're successful in this grant process.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Seems like they want to go into a less intrusive area, you know, just putting it in, everything seemed like it would be easier.
Other than that, other than the one I talked to you about down North Ridge 254, most of the ones are fairly rural, but that I'm aware of, near market.
And there's no way for the community to protect itself by requiring certain setbacks? We're not allowed to overstep the, the state on that, for the feds?
Well, we're still looking at it to see what we can do. Let's, we're gonna work with Tom, we'll, we'll come up with some things that may enhance our capabilities here in Lorain County with the grant money. As, as I stated, I don't think it's not coming, I think there is a pipeline coming, so...
Right, but maybe we put it in a least, less intrusive area.
Right, we'll start working on that. And the other thing I wish to share with, with the group here is that Nexus will be here next week?
Yes.
Okay? Every time you folks come in, you, you get them nervous, and they come in behind you. All is well, all is well. So I've indicated to their representative that, that they need to come stronger to hoop with information, that we were expecting some additional information the last time. I, I won't say that they're, that they're not cooperative, but, but the depth of what they've provided so far, I find is somewhat a little bit inefficient. So hopefully we'll have a better presentation from them next week. I would ask that you, if you can make it, I know people have busy schedules and jobs, but it may be, it may be in your best interest to be here, too.
Yeah, they're very proactive in, in combating any negative publicity. So let me, let me just say one quick thing. We're at a critical time now, where FERC is, is pushing alternate routes. We really need your resolution at this point in time to kick the fence over to the point where we go to a route where we want to go, rather than a route that we're forced to go in because they want to go there. So please consider this resolution, and I think of the time element. Right now, it's very critical that we get some input in.
I, I read some of the information you provided, and that's why during the, when Commissioner Kallo asked me a question, I was reading your material. Something about, there, FERC is asking for an alternative route. I thought I saw something that was on the news that you provided here. Can you elaborate on that?
Well, we have, okay.
Nope, that's fine. Tom, he's...
Get out of the way.
[laughing]
My life story, sorry.
Excuse me, I'm just more comfortable speaking into this. Now, back on February 6th or 8th, when the open houses, the second round of open houses started, that Nexus was holding across the state, the Federal Energy, and if any of you were there, you may have met Joanne Wacholder, okay?
I think that's the one.
Dark hair, big glasses, okay? Joanne is a 17-year employee of FERC, an environmental biologist by training, education, and she's the project manager for this. And we had the opportunity to spend about an hour and 15 minutes with her in a presentation that she put on. It was arranged by Nexus after I insisted for three months to have a meeting with Nexus to try to get more facts and figures and information. Well, they ended up arranging for Joanne. Well, that was a wonderful opportunity, because the next day, myself and a fellow named John Strong from Medina County drove out to Sandusky and spent two more hours with her, trying to understand this FERC process. And as I think I said initially, you know, it, she said, "Paul, it's not FERC's responsibility to propose a reroute. You know, the company picks the route, it's our job to evaluate their route, and then to mitigate," I love this word, "to mitigate the issues associated with it, but not to change the route." So it became incumbent upon us, I mean, she said it multiple times, "It's incumbent upon you, if you don't like the route, to propose an alternative."
Okay, so, so FERC, they've encouraged you to
Yes.
Take charge of your own destiny, but they are not asking for an alternative route. I mean, they're suggesting that that may be an alternative for you to move a process. When I was reading what you had there, I thought maybe it was that they were asking, the federal government was asking for an alternative.
Well, let's, behind the scenes, off the record, you know, in telephone conversations, it's, if you want this thing out of your neighborhood, out of your county, out of your township, if you, you need to submit this alternative. It's your responsibility.
I understand, I was just trying to get a little clarity on, on the materials.
And, and again, if you look at this letter that she filed on the 24th, giving specific direction to the company, you're gonna see in there very, very specifically, the last line item is, "You will, you know, you will report to us on this route that was filed by the City of Green on the 20th third," so.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioners, David Ashenhurst, Oberlin. I think that FERC has said you will evaluate the route is pretty close to saying, "We'll look at an alternative." They're now saying, "Okay, Nexus, you look at the alternative that has been proposed and report back." I think that is important. I wish I'd been at this meeting.
Yeah, I just think it's, you know, I just think you're having the company that wants to go someplace else evaluating the route and coming back and reporting on it. It's, it, you know, I find it highly unlikely that they're gonna find the alternative route desirable, and that's probably gonna be their report. It's just, it's just a little absurd, that's all.
But it'll be interesting, I mean, when you say "not in my backyard" to four people, and then it ends up in only one person's backyard, that's, that's at least progress, right?
Right.
If that 75%...
That's 75%...
One person's backyard.
Yeah, but that 75% is very, it's a, it's a big number.
No, I mean, as I say, you don't make everybody happy, but you make fewer unhappy than, than you're making now.
The needs of the many outweigh the needs of the one.
Well, no, not necessarily that, too. I mean, just getting the equipment in between houses is a lot different than having to cover it up, you know, all the, all that goes into putting it through something dense rather than something wide open is, is gonna be cheaper for the company, so...
Well, actually, again, it may be less costly for, you would think, but when this pipeline is going in at probably $2 or $3 million a mile... this pipeline is going in at probably $2 or $3 million a mile, every added few feet. And they look, I'm sure they're looking at it from a cost.
Right.
Cost proposal, rather than from the benefit of the community.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
Right. We do look at.
Can I just mention, though, real quickly?
You have to, you have to do the mic, sorry. There's one there.
Just a great question.
This reroute proposal at the eastern end of the line adds 9.3 miles to their 250-mile route.
Again, percentages and all that. I guess I also wanted to say, I'm, I'm glad Tom was here today. I've been saying to a lot of people for a long time, talking about the Wellington situation, we lucked out, big time, that it was winter, that it was where it was. I've gone to meetings of the Black River Remedial Action Plan Advisory Committee and said, you know, I mean, they never put this on their schedule. And I said, if it had hit the Black River, we would have had a huge problem. And so, I know, I don't think you can come up with a resolution really quickly endorsing the alternative or something, but you can probably put some language together relatively quickly that says, we find that at least our information is that the proposal mitigates the impact of this pipeline by three quarters. It mitigates the impact of this pipeline by 50% of, of the wetlands. If that's true, nine miles a pipe, you know, less than a 5% thing, they've got to have more than that in contingencies.
Well, Tom, David, I'm just, was bringing up a point. You don't have to impress that upon me, okay?
Yeah.
The, but these, what I was, what I was, what my point was, is these companies work on profit margins, and they're going to take the shortest route between A and B, I think that they, they can. And I'm not saying I agree with that.
Right.
But, but that's standard operating.
Fortunately, we have government, which I remember Alan Shepard, when they said, what were you thinking, you know, as you were the first man into space, he said that everything under me was built by the lowest bidder. And he was, he was a little worried about that.
And so we should have been.
Yeah. So, but it is, I think, up to public officials to make, to make the best arrangement they can and put safety first. And so I guess, if you can't come up with a resolution, you know, endorsing some particular proposal, at least to prepare some points of, you know, we would endorse a route that minimizes impacts on this, that minimizes impact on that, that disrupts things as little as possible. At least to say, we, you know, you worry about your bottom line, we'll worry about, you know, the, the minimization of risk, rather than the minimization of expense. Thank you.
Thank you. One more time. I want to make a, a point. This is a $1 billion project, a $1.5 billion project. They're not going to make $1 billion and $1. They're going to make a lot of money for a long time. And if it costs a couple million dollars to keep the community vastly more safe, they need to loosen their purse strings. That's what they need to do.
Can I make one more comment also? We're talking about moving it out of my backyard and into somebody else's. But what we found in trying to get a group together is, there are farmers that are actually in favor of this pipeline. Maybe they're strapped for cash, maybe they're going to pick up a couple thousand of dollars of this pipeline going through the part of the land that they're not using. They don't object to this pipeline. It's, it's the person that can't put up a basketball net because this pipeline is too close to their driveway. And there are people like that. I mean, those are the people that really feel bad about this pipeline. So even though those numbers are great, they don't even show that, to the people that are getting the pipeline, they don't object as much as the people that are, where it's going right through the middle of their yard.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing none, I move that we go into executive session, unless you guys have any more comments or, move that we go into executive session as outlined by the county administrator.
Second.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kalo.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.